Dr. Salazar, Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, Mr. Trevino, members of the board. This evening, we have students from Villarreal Elementary and Las Yescas Elementary, here to help lead us in the pledge. To introduce the student from Villarreal Elementary, we have the proud principal, Mrs. Ana Fernández.
Good afternoon. I'm Ana Fernández. I'm the proud principal of Villarreal Elementary, and here to represent us is Natalia Barron. Natalia is the daughter of Maria and Eliud Barron. She's 10 years old and is a proud student at Villarreal Elementary. She loves school. Her favorite subjects are reading, science, and coding. She is part of the morning announcement team, the cheer team, the music and running club. Natalia loves going to the beach, exercising, traveling, and dancing with her mom.
And to introduce from the students from Las Yescas is Mrs. Soto.
It is my pleasure to introduce to you an exceptional student from our district, Sofia Nava, the daughter of Jennifer Nava. Sofia is a young scholar with a deep love for reading, which has fueled her curiosity and passion for learning. Her favorite color is baby blue, a reflection of her bright and cheerful personality. Sofia dreams of becoming a principal one day, showcasing her early interest in leadership and commitment to education. Please join me in welcoming Sofia Nava. I am honored to introduce Jordan Ednandez, a dedicated and promising student in our school. Jordan is the son of Jordan and Nelda Ednandez, who have instilled in him strong values and a love for learning. His favorite color is blue, and in his free time, Jordan enjoys reading, watching TV, and playing on his Nintendo. Jordan dreams of becoming a customs agent when he grows up, with the important mission of protecting our bridge and ensuring the safety of our community. Please join me in welcoming Jordan Ednandez.
Ladies and gentlemen, these children are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
If everyone can remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. If there are any parents here, these fine students, will you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Mr. Castillo, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
Mr. Donald Henderson.
Present.
I am here, Martin Castillo. Mr. Jesús Amaya.
Present.
Ms. Andrea García.
Present.
Ms. Letizia Quintero, unable to make it tonight. Mr. Kevin Montes, unable to make it tonight. Dr. Gonzales Salazar. Ms. Casey Villafuerte, counsel.
Thank you. Roman numeral five, public audience and public comment. We didn't have anyone sign up for the public audience or public comment, which brings us to district recognitions. We have two, A B C D award above and beyond the call of duty, and number two is teachers achieving a higher level of proficiency and modeling lifelong learning. Dr. Salazar.
For the board, this evening, we want to tell you a story. We've been doing this for quite some time now, recognizing staff that goes above and beyond the call of duty, and here to tell us that story is Mrs. Amado, our deputy superintendent.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to introduce two outstanding transportation employees who exemplify a profile of a leader through their dedication and professionalism. They respond to parent concerns with a focused attention, ensuring that every issue is addressed promptly and thoroughly. This was recently acknowledged by a parent, a concerned parent of a third and a sixth grade student. A parent called and was very worried about the transportation arrangements, about where students were being picked up and where students being dropped off. Mr. Jaime Gonzalez, our transportation director, responded to parent concerns with a strong sense of urgency, and he personally took the time to drive out to the neighborhood and assess the situation. He made adjustments, then he took time to go and visit with the parent and to address the changes and the adjustments. The parent stated, "The transportation director did a great job in remedying the situation and took time to drive to my street." She couldn't believe that Mr. Gonzalez was taking his time stepping out of his office and from his department and going to personally visit the parent. Likewise, she also acknowledged Mr. Manuel Maganda, the bus driver. He has earned a reputation of always putting the safety and the needs of our students first. He was acknowledged by the parent as being very nice, patient driver with her children, and always ensuring that the safety of her students and all students remain the main priority. Both employees acted quickly to address the concerns, implementing solutions to enhance the safety and providing reassurance to the parent. Their proactive approach to resolving challenges reflects their deep commitment to the school community, making them exemplary leaders within the transportation team, and earning them the above and beyond the call of duty award. So today, we have Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Maganda receiving this award.
Achieving a higher level of proficiency in the challenging position in the field of education is important to us, and modeling lifelong learning is something our teachers do very well. Here to introduce us to the first teacher, who has done so by getting an advanced degree, is Dr. Tudon. Dr. Tudon.
Good evening, members of the board, Board President Mr. Trevino and Dr. Salazar. I'm delighted to stand before you today to recognize and celebrate the remarkable achievement of one of our outstanding content specialists. It is with great pleasure that I announce Christine Evans, who has earned a master's degree in leadership. This is significant milestone that reflects her dedication and hard work and commitment to personal and professional growth. Ms. Evans has not only excelled in her academic pursuits, but has also brought a wealth of knowledge and a fresh perspective to our team. Her ability to balance work responsibilities while pursuing an advanced education is truly commendable. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Christine's Evans on this outstanding achievement. Her dedication and success deserve our applause, and we are excited to see her reach ever even greater heights in her professional journey. Congratulations, Christie. We are incredibly proud of you.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. My name is Jennifer Ascareño, and I serve as the special services coordinator for the district. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce a remarkable member of our Los Fresnos C I S D family, who is being recognized today for an exceptional achievement, Ms. Laura Rodriguez, whose dedication to education and commitment to personal growth exemplify the very best of our district. Ms. Laura Rodriguez has been an integral part of the educational community for 20 years. Throughout her remarkable career, she has contributed to numerous roles, from dual language and bilingual pre-kinder teacher to a dyslexic lab teacher. Her adaptability, passion for teaching, and genuine care for students inspire us all. She holds a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies bilingual E C through fourth grade from University of Texas, Brownsville, and she certified to teach English Language Arts from grades six through eight. Additionally, she is a licensed as a speech pathologist assistant in the state of Texas. Her dedication and personal growth didn't end there. Motivated by her passion for supporting individuals with exceptionalities, she recently achieved her master's degree in special education with an educational diagnostician certification from Lamar University. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Laura Rodriguez on this well-deserved recognition and in thanking her for her continued dedication to our students and our community.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Please excuse my voice this evening. As the proud principal of Dora Romero Elementary, I'm honored to introduce to you one of our kindergarten teachers, Ms. Marcy Para, who has received her master's degree from Walden University in teacher leadership. Ms. Para has over 21 years' experience with the district, ranging in grade levels pre-K through third grade during these years. She absolutely loves being a classroom teacher. Ms. Para decided to pursue her master's degree after some encouragement from our instructional coach on campus and having more time to give to herself as her girls have kept her busy. Ms. Para currently serves from the role of kindergarten teacher leader and can often be seen leading PLCs and encouraging collaborative membership from all team members. D R E students, families, and staff are blessed to have their lives positively impacted by Ms. Para's passion for learning each and every day. Please help me by congratulating Ms. Marcy Para on this wonderful accomplishment.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. My name is Justin Stumble, the proud principal at Los Fresnos High School, and I would like to introduce to you tonight, Ms. Kimberly Rosas. Ms. Rosas graduated with her master's degree in English Rhetoric from the University of Texas at Rio Grande Valley in the summer of 2024. This will be her seventh year in the educational field as an English teacher, her in her first year working at Los Fresnos High School. Her educational journey as a bilingual and first-generation student continues to impact her professional goals as she contemplates to work with the curriculum or endeavoring to get a diagnostician certification. With the knowledge she has acquired, she looks forward to expanding curriculum activities for inclusion of special populations and bilingual students. This degree achievement couldn't have been done without her son as the main motivation, her boyfriend as her biggest supporter, and a lot of coffee and matcha lattes. We look forward to Ms. Rosas' continued work with our students at Los Fresnos High School. Thank you.
Mr. Trevino, Dr. Salazar, members of the board, it's my honor to introduce Ms. Lisa Calvillo. Ms. Calvillo is in her first year here at L C M S. She's in our L U unit. Her impact has been felt throughout the campus, though. Her passion for students and parents is unmatched. She has a love for teaching, but more importantly, she has a love for making a positive impact in her students' lives. Her students gravitate towards her and absolutely love her. She has done wonders with them so far. Furthermore, in her short time here at L C M S, she has emerged as a teacher leader on campus with her colleagues. She is well-respected and leads by example. She recently graduated with her master's degree in educational administration from Lamar University, and it is her goal, within the next five years, to obtain an administration role. We know she'll make an amazing administrator because she truly loves students, loves education, and exemplifies a lifelong learner. We're lucky to have Ms. Calvillo on our campus, and we are extremely proud of her accomplishments. We present to you Ms. Lisa Calvillo.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. My name is Elisa Pinada, and I'm the proud principal at Los Fresnos United. This evening, we are proud to honor three of our L F U staff members for earning their master's degree. Mrs. Anna Aguilar is a dedicated world geography teacher with a total of 12 years of teaching experience, eight of those years serving students at Los Fresnos United. Ms. Aguilar earned a master's degree in curriculum and instruction from Grand Canyon University, following the footsteps of her mother, who also earned a master's degree. As a mother herself, she hopes to inspire her children, Emilia and Leo, through her commitment to education and lifelong learning. With a passion for leadership, Mrs. Aguilar is continually developing her skills to become a teacher leader. She aspires to take on a broader role in education with the goal of becoming an instructional coach or content strategist, where she can contribute to curriculum development and support her colleagues in creating impactful learning experiences. I present to you Mrs. Anna Aguilar.
Mrs. Diana, known as Allie on campus, Martinez, is a passionate dual A P and honors chemistry teacher at L F U with 15 years of teaching experience only in Los Fresnos. She earned her master's degree in chemistry from Grand Canyon University with the goal of teaching dual enrollment chemistry courses within the school district. Now, Mrs. Martinez is focused on expanding both the A P chemistry and dual enrollment chemistry programs. Although chemistry can be a rigorous subject, she emphasizes its presence in everyday life, aiming for her students to leave the classroom with valuable skills to analyze and understand the world around them. Beyond the classroom, Mrs. Martinez is deeply involved in her community as a member of the gathering at O C C. She remains dedicated to serving the families in her hometown of Los Fresnos and looks forward to discovering more ways to make a positive impact. She is a proud, she is proud to be a Los Fresnos graduate. I welcome you, Ms. Martinez. And she was number three in her class. Mr. Rolando Ocañas is a dedicated honors world history and A P world history teacher at L F U with 11 years' teaching experience, nine of those serving at Los Fresnos United. He currently earned his master's in anthropology at the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. With a passion for research and education, he aspires to become a published researcher and a university lecturer in the future. Alongside his academic endeavors, Mr. Ocañas is actively involved in his community as an assistant coach for Los Fresnos Tennis and works as a field camera operator for Los Fresnos Media. Mr. Ocañas?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Trevino, board members, and Dr. Salazar. My name is Jennifer Garcia, and I have the privilege of being the principal at Olmito Elementary School. And tonight, we are honoring three of our employees for their advanced courses and their achievements. So first, let me recognize Mrs. Anna Miranda, a dedicated educator who has been with Olmito Elementary School for 10 years. She recently earned her master's degree in curriculum and instruction with a focus on math and science. With 10 years in education, Mrs. Miranda is committed to inspiring her students' curiosity and love for learning, always seeking new ways to help them grow. Please help me in congratulating Mrs. Anna Miranda for this outstanding achievement. Next, it is my pleasure to recognize Mrs. Myra Melendez, a fifth-grade bilingual teacher at Olmito Elementary School, for earning her master's degree in curriculum and instruction with a focus on elementary math and science. They went through the program together. Mrs. Melendez has been in education for eight years, seven of which has been dedicated to Olmito Elementary School. Her passion for student learning inspired her to pursue her degree, and she has gained valuable skills to further enhance her impact on students and the school community. She remains committed to continuous growth in her ever-evolving field. Congratulations, Mrs. Melendez, and thank you for your dedication. And last but certainly not least, it is my honor to recognize Mr. Nicholas Agado, who recently earned his master's degree in library science. With eight years of experience in education, this is his first year at Olmito Elementary School as library media specialist. Mr. Agado pursued this degree to share his passion for reading with a broader audience of students. Before becoming a librarian, he served as an assistant band director at L F U and L F H S. We're excited to have him on our team and congratulate him on this wonderful achievement.
Good evening, Mr. Trevino, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. My name is Alfred Uriegas. I'm the proud assistant principal at Resaca Middle School. Here with us this evening is Graciela Ofracio. She has been a dedicated and valuable member of Resaca Middle School for three years. Her commitment to education and her students is evident on her daily work. It is my great pleasure to announce that Mioso Ofracio has achieved a remarkable milestone in her academic journey. She has received and earned her doctor of education degree in curriculum and instruction from U T R G V. We commend Dr. Ofracio for her hard work, dedication, and pursuit of higher education. Her accomplishment is a testament of her commitment to providing exceptional education to our students. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Ofracio on this significant achievement.
When Los Fresnos teachers earn advanced degrees, they increase their earning potential. We have a system of stipends, but they also opportunities for kids as teachers at the secondary level qualify for offering dual enrollment classes. And teachers at every level increase the vivid, less than a percent of vivid lessons, the opportunities, the meaningful experiences that change the trajectory of students' lives. We could not be more proud of you. Thirty-five percent of our teachers have advanced degrees, and that's something that is a point of pride for our school district.
I'd also like to take this time to acknowledge the spouses and significant others of these fine educators. If you will stand and be recognized, as we all know, we don't do it all on our own, and it does take a community. So please, spouses and significant others, if you will rise. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you. This takes us to district presentation. We have an update by the Los Fresnos Educational Foundation. Ms. Garcia, Mr. Garcia, welcome.
Good evening, board. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. President Trevino, board, and the also, don't forget, cabinet. Thank you, guys, for letting us speak tonight. We're gonna go ahead and just give you, guys, a little bit of an update as to where we're at on the foundation. But before I start, I want to go ahead and introduce some of our current board members that are with us today. Lydia Garcia, Dr. Roach, and Roger Rodriguez. The rest of the board members weren't able to make it, but we're here to give you an update. First of all, I want to go ahead and start off, first of all, by thanking you all for giving us the opportunity to serve on this board. It is a great honor for us to be given this responsibility. It is a huge responsibility, and we could have done it without the support of the district. So first of all, I want to thank everybody here for giving us this opportunity to give back to our community and to the school. So I want to kind of give you, guys, a little bit of an update as to what's going on with our foundation. We, oh, yeah, let's move on here. We initially started with the infusion of the district funds. We have maintained those accounts, and we've actually kept our costs very, very low. We basically didn't have hardly any costs, minimal costs at the beginning of the foundation. We managed also, in the meantime, to raise an additional five thousand funds in donations that were brought in by the, by various donors. Now, the problem or the issue we had at the beginning was our nonprofit status. That is usually a very large undertaking, getting that nonprofit status. And we had a little bit of a hiccup at the beginning, but we've managed to work through that, and we've officially filed for our nonprofit status as of September 2024. It is now in the hands of the IRS. We are now pending that status. It could be anywhere, at the earliest, it would be the end of the year, and March would probably be the more or less six-month timeline. One of the things that we wanted to focus on, and one of the reasons that funds were kind of difficult to get in, is because that nonprofit status is very important to have when people want to donate. So one of the things that we're gonna do is, soon as we get that nonprofit status, is we're gonna be hiring a grant writer. Now, that grant writer we hire will be working on a per-free basis, which means that as we get funds, and as he's able to bring in funds, he will get a percent of that for his work, and then the foundation gets the rest. We're not necessarily in the situation right now to hire a director. We're not necessarily in a position financially to pay a full-time grant writer. So this, we feel, is the best way to go in regards to with the funds we have right now. We have, the funds we have currently right now are basically in our bank accounts. We are looking at moving those into a CD to just earn interest while we're waiting for those donations to come in. We have established a QR code that will allow for donations to come in in the meantime. There are people that actually will donate without necessarily wanting a nonprofit status, and so we've established that. Let's see. All right, so that pretty much covers kind of an update as to where we are. We have managed to do a lot of different things. We've created a website, and I'm gonna go ahead, Lydia, go ahead and go into that, because she's handling a lot of our LinkedIn and Facebook, social media within our foundation.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Trevino, Dr. Salazar. So during this year, we have worked towards creating a lot more marketing with the foundation, and part of that marketing, or free marketing, is being able to create a website that will go ahead and allow the community and potential sponsors to be able to know about the foundation, what we stand for, and what we're looking to accomplish. So we are creating the website. It is gonna be going live soon. Thankfully, the district has helped us to kind of walk us through creating that website, and we are hoping that by the end of this month, it will be live. Aside from our website, we also have created, I'm sorry, LinkedIn and Facebook pages. LinkedIn is more of a professional standing that will allow a lot of other donors who aren't in our immediate service area that will know us more and that may work with us to be able to create that partnership so we can go ahead and be able to donate to students and teachers and be able to work with others outside of the valley. We've also created the Facebook page. Facebook is really helpful to connect with the community. We do want to let the community know what we're doing. We want to be transparent, so that way, if there is any sponsors or potential donors, they are able to work with us as well. But Facebook is also another way that we're gonna go ahead and use for free marketing to get the foundation out there and be known. So going back to some of the accomplishments we have been able to make, thanks to the district, we were invited to the Teachers Awards Banquet, and we were able to donate to the primary, the elementary and secondary district teachers of the year award. So we were able to give to Ms. Martinez and Ms. Rojas a five-hundred-dollar donation. They worked very hard to be able to accomplish so many things for our students, and we thought it was just perfect to be able to give back to them the same way they give back to our students. So some of the goals and events that we are working towards in the meantime while we gain our nonprofit status is being able to not just raise the five thousand dollars that we've raised this year, but double that and, of course, keep going more than that. So we do want to reach out to new sponsors. We are doing the legwork. We are reaching out, not just by phone, email, but we're even sending letters. We want to be able to reach out to many more sponsors and be able to create a lot more donation potential to be able to give back to our teachers and students. Something else that we do want to work towards is a gala where we're able to kind of showcase some of the things that our students are able to do, as well as our teachers, and be able to reach out to new sponsors as well. Some silent auctions with donated items, as well as a golf tournament. We're trying to use methods that we know works within our community and that are able to give us a lot more room for improvement as well. And of course, all of this, once again, would not be possible without the help that you have entrusted in us. So again, we do want to go ahead and thank you for the trust and the commitment that you gave us, not just helping us get started, but continue on to be able to move forward and be there for our students and teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, if I may, about a year ago, you nominated these fine members of our community to begin a foundation that is still in its infant stages. I've had the opportunity to work alongside them as they set in place things like board operating procedures, made decisions on how they're gonna operate, the fact that they wanted to first secure nonprofit status. In, with good intentions, we gave some seed money, and it was above a threshold where they could have used the one-pager, we could have used the one-page application for the nonprofit status, but because of our good intentions and the threshold that we exceeded, they had to go through the long form. I have seen them, I wouldn't say agonize, but be very thoughtful over every decision, and I think they're setting a solid foundation for the future. I've had to remind them, no, sometimes you have to go slow to go fast. Believe in yourselves, you guys are doing well. But I know you will join me in encouraging them to continue along this path, because the future, the future is bright. Already, you're making an impact with our teachers, and I just, I know you hold full-time jobs, careers, and we want to thank you for the work that you do and for your willingness to serve on this foundation. Mr. Trevino.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar, and I'd also like to take a second just to commend the work that you all are doing and really appreciate you all for your efforts. It's great to see that you've not only taken the money, the seed money that we've provided, but that you've grown that as well and have plans to grow that and create interest in those funds. So I know that the foundation is in good hands with you all, and as Dr. Salazar said, we did have a big say in who we felt would be the best for this education foundation, and so appreciate you all very much. I'll open it up to any other board members if they have anything else to say, but thank you. Mr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. I just want to build on what President Trevino said. We do thank you for doing this, and we know that it can be a lot of work that goes on, planning and putting together a foundation. Foundations live in perpetuity. You know, they'll long live, outlive most of us, that's the idea. And so the work that you all are putting into the foundation is something that will pay dividends way into the future. So I do appreciate you all doing this. You're not getting paid for it. You all work full-time jobs and have families and doing all this groundwork at the beginning. I know you all have ties to the community, so you see the value of what the work this can do, you see the future of it, and you know it's gonna do great things, so I appreciate you all doing this work for us and building a foundation that's gonna have a big impact in our community.
Thank you all so much. Yes?
Just to enter into the minutes of our meeting, the members of the foundation, board members, Adan Garcia, Lydia Garcia, Marisa Amaya, Dr. William Roach, Roger Rodriguez, Sandra Lopez Langley, and Jorge de la Fuente, thank you again for the incredible work you're doing. Appreciate you.
Okay, this brings us to district reports. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Trevino, members of the board, we present the monthly financial reports, and at this time, we entertain any questions you might have about the financial report.
Any questions from the board regarding the financials? Mr. Henderson.
Just a comment, Dr. Salazar, I, we see these reports, and you put them together every month, especially the capital campaign, the bond, it's so detailed. I appreciate all the work you all put in it, and you go back and rework it again for us and make it simpler to understand. Anyone who wants to see where our money goes can open up this, you know, these couple pages, and they can see where every dollar is accounted for. So I appreciate your work on making it simple.
And if I may comment as well, transparency is, we always strive for that, and the community has entrusted us with this bond money, and I believe that we have been good stewards of that. And Mr. Balzalua, we appreciate your efforts in putting these reports together and keeping them going, so that if anybody at any time wishes to see where the funds are, you've made it very easy for that, so thank you, sir. Very good. That brings us to, anything else? Ms. Garcia, yes?
Yeah, this may or may not pertain, but for the elementary field trips. I see that they're gonna go to the Harlingen Performing Arts Center to watch a couple of different things, and the first thing that came to my head is, I can't wait when the, to, a few years from now, maybe a year or two from now, where they're not having to go to Harlingen, they can come to Art Performing Arts Center and our kids, our high school kids are performing for them. It's gonna look exactly like it.
Great thought, yes, ma'am. All righty, so that finishes up district reports. We're going to consent agenda. We have twelve items on tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion for consent agenda? Mr. Amaya.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve all twelve items as listed on consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Garcia, second. We have a first and a second, any discussion on tonight's consent agenda? And just so everybody knows, the consent agenda, these are items that we do on a yearly basis, things that we have, these are routine things, so we get packets ahead of time. I want to make sure that that goes on the record as well, and we overlook all of the information that is provided by the superintendent and his cabinet, and so I know that we go through these quickly and we accept it as is, but I just want to put it on the record that that is what we do in our process. So we've got a first, a second, no discussion. All those in favor of approving consent agenda on today's agenda, please raise your hand. Consent agenda passes one, four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Castillo. That brings us, is that right? Five-zero. No worries. All right, brings us to action items. We have nine, no, thirteen, thirteen action items tonight. The first one, discuss and take action to approve a resolution committing fund balance for fiscal year 2024, the amount to be determined subsequent to fiscal year-end close. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
Yes, sir, I move that we approve a resolution committing the fund balance for the fiscal year 2024 with the amount to be determined subsequent to the fiscal year-end close.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, is there any discussion on the action item? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving a resolution committing fund balance for fiscal year 2024, the amount to be determined subsequent to fiscal year end close, please raise your hand. Action item passes five-zero. Discuss and take action to approve budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2024 through 2025. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo.
I move, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving budget amendment number one for fiscal year 2024 through 2025, please raise your hand. Action item number two passes five-zero. Number three, discuss and take action to approve the donation of two large eight-foot refractor telescopes for Resaca Middle School. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
Yes, sir, I move that we approve the donation of the two large eight-foot retractor telescopes for Resaca Middle School.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the donation of two large eight-foot refractor telescopes for Resaca Middle School, please raise your hand. Action item number three passes five-zero. Ms. Garcia.
I know we passed discussion, but I just want to point out that we do have some very generous individuals in our community. Sometimes we get donations from corporations, but when you see people that, and I don't know if they want their names out there, so I'm not gonna put their names out there, but very thankful for the generosity of longtime Los Fresnos residents, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Number four, discuss and take action to approve a resolution for the transfer of one-point-four million dollars from local capital project funds for maintenance and operations in fiscal year 2025. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a resolution for the transfer of one-point-four million from local capital project funds from maintenance and operation to fiscal year. of $1.4 million from local capital project funds from maintenance and operation to fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo.
I move.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving a resolution for the transfer of $1.4 million from local capital projects fund for maintenance and operation in fiscal year 2025, please raise your hand. Action item number four passes five, zero. Number five, discuss and take action to approve the agreements or contracts for the vocational complex building B to 8A, builders, and building C to RCJ Roofing and Construction. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
Yes, sir. I move to approve the contracts.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agreements or contracts for the vocational complex building B to 8A, builders, and building C to RCJ Roofing and Construction, please raise your hand. Action item number five passes five, zero. Number six, discuss and take action as necessary to add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service, and according to the instruction sheet for the Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 123, first reading. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo.
Motion to approve, sir.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Garcia, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of adding, revising, or deleting local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service, and according to the instruction sheet for the Tasby Localized Policy Manual Update 123, first reading, please raise your hand. The action item passes five, zero. Number seven, discuss and take action to approve the revisions to policy CH local to be adopted in the first reading. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
Yes, I move to approve the action for the revisions to policy CH local to be adopted in the first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the revision to policy CH local to be adopted in the first reading, please raise your hand. Action item number seven passes five, zero. Number eight, discuss and take action to approve the revisions to policy DEC local to be adopted in the first reading. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the revisions to policy DEC local to be adopted in the first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Castillo, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the revisions to policy DEC local to be adopted in the first reading, please raise your hand. Action item number eight passes five, zero. Number nine, discuss and take action to approve the revisions to policy EFB local to be adopted in the first reading. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
Yes, sir. I move to approve the revisions to policy EFB local to be adopted in the first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson. There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the revision to policy EFB local to be adopted in the first reading, please raise your hand. The action item number nine passes five, zero. Action item number 10, discuss and take action to approve the revisions to policy EIC local to be adopted in the first reading. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I move that we approve the revisions to policy EIC local to be adopted in the first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the revision to policy EIC local to be adopted in the first reading, please raise your hand. And action item number 10 passes unanimous, five, zero. Action item 11, discuss and take action to approve the collection development policy. Do I have a motion? Ms. Garcia.
Yes, I move to approve the collection development policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Henderson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving the collection development policy, please raise your hand. Action item 11 passes five, zero. Number 12, discuss and take action to approve adjustment to the middle school coaching stipends for the 2024-2025 school year. Do I have a motion? Mr. Henderson.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the adjustment to the middle school coaching stipend for the 2024-2025 school year.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? Mr. Castillo.
Just, we didn't adjust them, Salazar, we didn't adjust them in the pay raises, or is this something new?
This is new. This is, we're now allowing a stipend for each middle school, a concern that was brought forward recently.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor of approving adjustment to the middle school coaching stipends for the 2024-2025 school year, please raise your hand. Action item number 12 passes five, zero. Number 13, discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2024-2025 school year, A, teachers, B, assistant principal/instructional officer, and C, executive director. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo.
Motion to approve, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Amaya, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of approving superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2024-2025 school year, A, teachers, B, assistant principal/instructional officers, and C, executive director, please raise your hand. Action item number 13 passes five, zero. Ms. Anaya, is there anybody here? If they will stand and be recognized and welcomed, thank you. Congratulations. This brings us to closed session, which we don't need to do. Open, oh, go ahead. Oh. Sorry, everyone. All right, closed session. Let me just read this. Pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including but not limited to 551.074 and 551.076, we will be going into closed session to discuss all items as appropriate regarding personnel recommendations, and number two, deliberation regarding safety and security management system. It is 6:58. We are back in open session. It is 7:47. Announcements, Dr. Salazar.
Sure. Trevino, members of the Board, on Monday, October 7th, we have our next regularly scheduled school board meeting in this building. We got volleyball on Tuesday, September 10th at 5:00 PM. They play away at, football game Friday, September 13th at 7:00. At home against Laredo United, South Panthers, parent night. It is parent night, and there's, and it is also middle school football night. It will be packed. Those are all the announcements we have.
Thank you, Dr. Salazar. It is 7:47, and I adjourn this regular school board meeting.